Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Six o'clock on Thursday, March 22nd. This is for the WWTF Board of Sewer Commissioners. Agenda approval approved at minutes of 2:20 to 18:00. Mail, public comment, chief operators' operation report. Physical year 19 WWTF, all and M budget approval. We're gonna have a presentation from Green Lane Solar proposal for the WWTF site. Motion accept?
So moved.
Check it. Any further discussion or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of 2:20 to 18:00?
So moved. Second. Well, I can't, I have to abstain now, let's get him in.
You're gonna, well, actually, we don't have enough people to be able to approve at this table until next time.
Okay.
Okay, this there's not three of us still. Okay, mail?
No.
No mail, that's good. Any public comment? No public comment? Chief Operations Report.
Okay. We were issued our final state permit finally. I received an email copy of it. I'm waiting for the hard copy in the mail. No changes were made, so I'll just make sure that every detail is covered and accounted for. And I'll go through with my comb and should we do what we're supposed to do. I'm contacted by a member of the Vermont Rule Water Association. She wishes to come down toward the plant and discuss training opportunities down here at Arvinet State, which is fantastic. So she's coming in April, I'm gonna give her a tour and we're gonna talk about maybe some training either here or somewhere in the area and that should be great. We have a new user interested in connecting to the municipal system on Route 7. It's in the Roost Gray area. I have provided them with the drawings and the application information that they need to make a decision and move forward and I'll help them through that one. I know what that was about. I drafted the EU Sewer Reduction Policy and the associated application for the board's approval. As we've discussed, this will further to streamline that process, provide for a formal application that we'll have to keep on file and we'll be able to collect the fee associated with the application and address the total allowable EU reductions and physical sewer decommissions allowed per year. I know that was important. Nelson had mentioned that even though the board had approved it, he wanted it in writing somewhere that we would only allow three total for reductions and decommissions for the calendar year. So that's no problem.
I'm sorry, is that free each or free total?
Free total.
Total, okay.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Whether they're reductions or decommissions is free total.
Correct. So I guess I just would like the board's approval of that policy in the application so we can make the show.
What's your point there guys?
I'm sorry for my ignorance, but what is the downside of three, four, five reductions or...
Has an impact on the usage fees of all the others around the system. If you had half of them sign off your user fees. Say that a mobile home park came in, we've had this in the past, and said, "I want to discontinue 26 of my EU's."
Is that considered one reduction or is that considered 26?
Twenty-six. And that could have a major impact on, and we have several of those parks in town that you never know what flux they're in. So we have to sort of limit.
So the formula is the total of the budget that we need to collect from the system is divided by the number of users on the system.
Okay.
So that might make it clear that if there's a significant reduction in the total users, how the other users will pay a lot more.
So, but they'll just take that same situation. If you had a mobile home park that wanted to, that was going out of business or whatever, they sold, would they have to wait three per year for multiple years in order to...
If they know they were selling, the one that I think has been here at least for the last 10 years talking about this and if yet there's a form you have to do away with with them. And they could have requested three every year and they would have 30 of them gone by now, but they haven't done yet because they're in flux of what they really want to do. So, no, I think...
So in this way, we can plan our budget too. It's very important for budget planning. The original startup costs in a lot of these areas was all like grant funded through the town and we literally spent over a million dollars in some of these areas. So if we do do a reduction, then we just want to make sure it doesn't have a giant impact on our budget on a yearly basis.
We include the connections. A lot of towns when they put in a sewer system, they make the homeowner pay for the connections.
Correct.
We did the connections so that they had no charge.
Right, I guess I'm trying, I'm struggling with what happens when, let's say you had a mobile home park that was going out of business, they were shutting down 26 of these. Now they have to wait 26 divided by three years in order to be able to do it.
It will be up to this board to decide. We can always make an exception to the rule. The policy is this and this is what was set out. But if somebody came in with that question, the sewer board...
Well, my question is more around the net, right? But let's say right across the street, you had another mobile home park who was opening up and opening once 26 connections. Is that a one for one or what is that?
They would have a fee that they would pay and they would get their connections as long as they were where the sewer...
But that was, well, those are two disconnected transactions.
I think what we're trying to look at...
What's a disconnected connection?
This system was set up on so many users. First of all, it was $365 a year or something to start with. Three hundred sixty, they had so many people down there. Yeah, that's what they figured. Now, see, that's why they're a little bit, a lot of these people, which I look both ways. I'm the devil's advocate. A lot of these people, well, look, when the sewer system came in, they said, "Look, we want these places connected." Now that costs a ton of money to put all these connections in. Well, if they drop them all off, the rest of the people can't afford it. And this isn't a town project. This is a, it's supported by the users. That's what it is, right Darcy?
It is, you are correct.
Right, and my question is more, just for understanding.
I think it would be a...
All I wanted to say was this, if you've got, you know, these, well, I know for sure, like a large share park, you can probably request it to be put on here. And that's the same one Nelson was yakking about with far as wanting to get some off, which that's fine too. I don't care if, you know, things didn't quite move their way, but it has to be, it can't be done all in one shock because who's gonna pay? Are we gonna refer to that old, what's it, pound and pick it up?
And we provided the information to the parks as requested and they simply have not filled out applications for decommissions. I think that's where Nelson was going with that. So we provide the opportunity for them to...
Now she talks real fast.
And to be clear, my question is more for understanding.
I can't understand her half the time. But I honestly agree, she's trying to say what's going on here. And that's why, what I'm trying to say also is, look, we add some and, you know, if somebody has to get off, well, fine, they get off, they make an application, but we can only absorb so many per year. I'm all for keeping that. I don't want the rest of you people...
I agree. I agree, but I want to make sure that you understand the process. Basically, what you're looking at, somebody has to come in and get an application to disconnect. And we've done that through the years. Somebody that wants to connect has to come and do an application, pay the fee to connect. So any new user that would come on would go through a little different process than the disconnect. So there's two separate things in which the sewer commissioners approve either to connect or to disconnect. We do both of ours.
There's a whole separate application process for residential and non-residentials. So they're a different process for...
But there's no, there's no limit to the number of connections, but we're limiting the number of disconnections. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on what's connecting. Is it residential, is it non-residential? And what, can the pump station in that area handle it? Is the infrastructure able to handle it? There's a host of questions, so it's not like, it's not clear.
So there's no, there's no limit on connections? That's a discussion and an evaluation whether or not it's feasible.
Correct.
But there's a limit on disconnection or reduction?
Correct.
Or there's a proposal?
There's a proposal in front of you tonight to formalize the limitation that we have imposed.
Well, the board has already voted on the limitation. It's just that we wanted to incorporate it into the reduction policy itself.
So in reality, this is moving, it's like it's in the policy book.
Correct.
Right, and to be clear, I'm not objecting to anything, I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, I'm happy to answer.
But did you understand her thing when she, when she described connections? Because there is limitations, not so much here at the treatment plant because we have some room for growth, but a lot of our pump stations would go for what was its size there. So if you had something major come in, like a large business or something, we'd have to go through a whole process in which they might have to pay to upgrade some other pump stations or well, so there's fees connected with that. So when you say 26 connections, if they're not right next door, it can make a big difference.
Right, right, and there's actual physical work that has to take place in order to create the connections.
What kind of industry, does it need pre-treatment? It would just be, it would be an individual basis and we would handle it that way. I've got all the applications in place where we could take in all the information that we're engineering and do what we need to do to make it work.
Yeah, and we would hope, and we would hope that some people would have that interest to come in and want to put more connections for us. Because it drives the price the other way versus the disconnect.
What we're looking at is, when this was talked over a long time ago, I haven't really been there. The Ridgetrack, they talked about that stuff. And of course, they would have to put in a holding tank. And this was all discussed, right Darcy?
Yeah, yeah, we've got the location where they would need to pump to.
This was all discussed and that's how this procedure works. I'm just trying to explain what I know about it. And if you did have something, a big facility, which I don't know if that's happened, but if it did, you would have to go through these processes to make sure that we could handle this defect. The system has quite a lot of capacity on it.
Yes, we do.
It'd be wonderful if we could get, you know, more people on there because it would, well, they'd need more money available. And every year, things go up. You know, I mean, she's kept it pretty good. I think she...
I understand, it would be less cost per user.
Well, that's right. Well, even if it didn't go down, at least it wouldn't go up. And we could operate and it would be...
We have the mechanisms in place to visit that with whatever industry or company would be interested.
And we talked about our process of going through when somebody does connects like that. We also have to notify the state when we're having certain things connect because we have to specify what our usage is gonna be. There's a whole major process we're gonna go through before people are gonna be able to really connect, unless it's a single homeowner or something like that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the EU Sewer Reduction Policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any of us with those present?
I'll try to speak a little slower.
You do speak fast.
I do, I do.
I'm not criticizing you.
I know, I'm just trying, I'm trying to walk a little faster. Let's see, we had to pull the pump from the process water holding tank, which is out in the UV and clean it. It was actually a nail from the original construction. So I think the only reason it didn't ruin the pump is because it was rusty and it actually snapped. But that was interesting, all these years, 12 years, and we found a nail from, they must have dropped it. And it's just been floating around down there and finally found it's way... So we got that back and started this. We had a townwide power outage on Saturday, March 3rd, and all of the stations performed well with the exception of PV3. Those drives love to fail when there's a power failure and the power's switching over and both drives failed. So we had to run out there and reset those and they reset. Basically, we had to build pumps. And so if you don't get there within 15 minutes when there's no pumps running, we're gonna have a problem. So, and then we had the townwide power outage last night. One of the pumps at PV3 experienced a drive failure, but just the other one was fine. So we worked with that fine.
So I have a quick question on last night. So you weren't notified during the day?
No.
So I think it's worth a call to bring to people and just say, you know, you operate the facility here, we need to be notified with a phone call or email.
I suspected it was scheduled, yes.
It should have been.
I was on the list. I used to get phone calls. I didn't this time, so something changed there.
I didn't need the phone call, yes.
Absolutely. This is very critical.
Yes, it is. Yeah, otherwise, I would have just had my coat on and just been waiting by the door like I always do. Washed my coat, dressed up ready. Let's see, pump number one at EV1 down at Altid Garden, we had a seal failure. First seal fail in 12 years that that happened. That's the new pump that it took a year to get fixed. It's been in service now for only eight months. I'm going to have a conversation with the owner about that. I think it's worth a conversation. That should have happened. What that just means is that...
Is there a technical seal?
Yeah. The last time they put it together, yeah, somebody didn't do something right. The time before that, they didn't put a bearing in. That's why the impeller was getting stuck, cutters. So I'll follow through with that. If they won't work with me on getting a new pump, I'm just not gonna do business with them anymore. I told them, "I've got 23 pump stations. It's really worth your while to replace this pump." So, but that was a sale that I really need to have a conversation with the owner and I just don't have time to do that, but I will. It's critical, of course, when you have two pumps down there. It's just not even an option. So what we did was we put in the old rebuild that we took out, but the cutters were junk, which is why we put in the new pump. So we took the new cutters, up the new pump and put it in the old pump with the good owner. So we just right there on the spot, took everything and revamped it and got it up and running. It took us all day, it was quite a project and it was cold. I didn't need a hand. It was cold, it was cold. Okay, pump number two failed at PC1 on Sunday, March 11th. That was a clog and the check offs, we grew that, we said it. And the septic pump clogged two times and the only way we can get that clog out is by churning up the piping and just pulling the whole piping apart. It bottlenecked into that solid pump.
Same stuff clogging it all the time?
It's septic. It's just, it happens. You know, usually it's once every six months, unfortunately, it was twice this time.
People throwing their wipes and stuff.
Oh, it's all wipes. It's all wipes, yeah, it's always wipes, really. Almost every single clog we have, whether it's the pump here...
It says right on the containers, "Don't put down your towel."
Yeah. Yeah, people, that's, you know, we've had this conversation before, the flush. That's all we do, they don't break apart.
You don't dissolve it all?
Yeah, yeah. So it's pretty much always the wipes. Of course, the weather's kept us busy, kept everyone busy and on our toes, I think, juggling and flowing and all of that. And on that note, hopefully we'll be moving into spring soon. I think it's spring, but I'm not really sure, can't tell. All the grinder stations, of course, will be inspected, they'll get their yearly inspections and then we'll do the three major wet wells, like we always do, clean that sludge blanket off the top so it doesn't affect our forest mean. And I'm down to the budget, but I think that's on a different, we'll wait for that. So our next scheduled meeting will be June 28th and that's an important one. That's for our budget adjustments for the previous year. So that's it.
Okay, moving on. All and M budget approval for physical year 19.
Hasn't changed since our last meeting and there's no increase in fee for the users this year.
If you have a chance to look at this, it's in the package.
You mean this thing with all the numbers on it?
If you haven't and if there's any questions, now's the time to ask and Darcy should be able to answer.
If you have any questions in the future, always feel free to get ahold of me.
I might send you an email with questions I have. I'm familiar with you right now. And a request for a tour.
My favorite thing in the world to do.
Yeah.
It is.
Gotta have a map showing where all the pump stations are.
Yeah, yeah, they're spread out, quaid it is.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll take a motion to accept the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to command you on the budget.
We're gonna say the same thing. Happy to see that you were able to keep this in, because it's wonderful, things skyrocketing. I mean, I know you're doing a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Your whole crew.
Your work hard, man's work hard.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of us with those here? Okay, moving on.
We had a sign.
I'll look at the second one please.
Yep. I couldn't get it on everyone's, there was not enough space, so it was potentially gonna be on.
Okay, Ralph, you would introduce yourself and explain what you're here for, people, so watch this later.
Great, yeah. So thank you for including me in your agenda. My name is Ralph Mayma. I live in Rattleboro and I represent Green Lantern in the southern counties. Usually Linda Windsor and Bennington for the most part. We are a, for the most part, solar developer, we're a renewable energy developer. We're based up in Waterbury. We have existed now for about eight years and we do sort of small and medium sized, for the most part, net metered solar projects all over the state. Up to this point, everything we've done has been in Vermont. All of our owners and employees live in Vermont and we're, at this point, we've done about 60 projects in nearly 50 towns around the state. There's a 500 kilowatt array on the property just up at the end of Deanview Road on the other side of the river and that's one of our projects.
What was the size of that again?
Big part?
What's the size of that?
That's 500 kilowatts. So that's the largest you can...
They talked about that at the planning meeting and nobody seemed at all.
Oh, yeah.
And I didn't know so, and that's why I asked you again.
Okay, yeah, sure. It's a 500, yeah. And that's the largest you can build under Vermont's net metering rule.
Yeah.
There are bigger ones, the one down at the racetrack and so forth is under a different program, but for the most part, we do, do net metered projects. The reason I'm here is that, you know, we were involved in that project and then earlier on, we were involved in discussions anyway about doing a project on Route 346 at the fire district's wellhead field. And as most of you are aware, that was not continued. And around that time, there were some other developers looking at the capped landfill outside here and also the ones up on Maple Grove Road. And I was very focused on larger projects at the time, so I don't think we even made a proposal. Time passed and then I was talking to somebody who was involved in Power Poundle back last fall and I asked them, you know, "Did anything ever happen at the wastewater treatment plant or on Maple Grove Road?" And they said, "No," to the best of their knowledge, "nothing ever had." So I got back in touch with Nelson. Nelson said, "Make us a proposal." I came to see the select board on December, I think it was 22nd. And shortly after that, like within a couple of days, I sent some very, very brief proposals along with draft agreements to Nelson and Linda that would allow us to begin to do a feasibility study on each one of these three landfills. The wastewater treatment facility and then the two on either side of the transfer station on Maple Grove Road. And so that's kind of where we are. I've had some interaction with the planning commission about this. I was going to go to a meeting there a week or two ago and then I had a conflict and they couldn't avoid it. And the last time you met here, between getting a late start and the snowstorm, I arrived just as you all were getting back in your cars to drive away. So this is, this is the second attempt to be here for your meeting. And then just a couple more things. So we're at a point where we would love to explore doing these projects and the lease option agreements are basically, they're only binding, you know, within a relatively short period, a year or so. They would give us some confidence to be able to spend some money to really research those sites thoroughly. And we're really very interested in doing this because we found around the state that, you know, as the whole solar market and the net metering market has changed over the last few years and the regulations have changed as well, we found ourselves looking more and more at projects around 150 kilowatts in size, so significantly smaller than the one across the river on gravel pits and landfills and brownfield sites and that kind of thing. And we've sort of more and more found ourselves specializing in that area. We're getting experience with the, you know, the engineering aspects, the interaction with towns and with A and R and so forth for permission to do these types of projects, with the legal language that has to be in the leases so that, you know, all parties' liabilities are covered on sites like this. And, you know, we think that we would be able to bring some serious interest and resources and experience to Poundle to be able to look at doing projects on those sites for you. And then I think there'd also be some economies of scale, in a sense, in doing multiple landfill projects in the same town because they'd all be able to move through the town review and permitting process together and so forth. So that's where we are and I'd love to, the other, one thing I'm curious about too is, what is the relationship between the select board and the water or wastewater treatment planning commission? Are you the same people or just...
We're sewer commissioners when we deal with the WWTF wastewater.
I see.
And because the state requires some sewer commissioners over this. And then we're select board when we're looking at the general select board duties and functions.
Got it. So you are the select board as well then?
That's correct.
Absolutely right.
Got it, okay. So I'm speaking to the right people?
But not while we're sitting here.
No, you're right. The water board, everybody. So that's where we are and I have a request and I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Well, let me ask a couple. One is, a lot of these things are being built around different places and the power is sold to people, sold to others. Is that what you're looking at here is to build something and then basically have a market to sell it to? Or looking at selling? Because the reason why I ask that is that the chair of the school board asked me that because they were interested in having a school look at, see if they could repower it from something like this. And if so, do you sell the power directly to them or would the power be sold to Green Mountain and Green Mountain basically does a billing where they only get a percentage? There's different ways, I've heard this occurring around the state and I was wondering which method, were both methods or what do we use?
Sure. So under net metered, under the net metering program, these projects would be directly connected to GMP's grid. So they'd be developing or they'd be delivering power into the local utility grid, not into the transmission lines. So the power would actually physically be used locally. And then we would look for, well, the projects that we do are almost all investor and lender financed. So we would go to investors either in Vermont or nearby. There's a company in Boston that we work a lot with that does a lot of energy investment. The lenders would typically be, you know, Vermont Banks, VITA, that type of thing. And then we would look for net metering customers or off-takers. And those are typically hospitals and schools. And you're familiar with this because some of your town meters are net metered through the hydro project. And so, and I'll give you a couple of examples of the sorts of off-takers that we do work with in other cases. But we would look for net metering customers and we would start right here and talk to the school, talk to, what's it called again, just next to the school, the children's, take care of them.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you, yeah. And any other nonprofits or municipal entities in SVSU or, you know, nearby?
Let me throw one hook up there that I don't know the answer to.
Sure.
We are currently on a net meter with the hydro. Can that same group of people that needs the power net meter with two companies at the same time or they only net meter with one?
You can net meter with two companies if you've got enough different meters. Meters can be part of different groups. And I actually went down a list of 17 accounts that Linda gave me and did a quick analysis on those. And those are apparently the 17 accounts that did not go with Bill Scully's project on the river. It's not a lot of savings and potential.
Yeah, I understand that piece because we're learning that slowly through the net metering that we're doing. But I guess the question, so we're not allowed to use the same meters that are already on a net meter program? It has to be meters that are not in the net program?
Yeah, because a meter can't be part of two different net metering groups.
Okay, I was wondering. Because there's still a lot of power that is being used from the net metering that you don't get paid for through the net metering process that we end up paying. So if we put in our own solar and we connected it, we would use all the power ourselves and basically get credit for power we wouldn't use or we paid a difference in what the power that was used. and basically get credit for power we wouldn't use or we paid a difference in what the power that was used and it didn't need it. So this, this thing, from what I'm understanding, pretty much tells me that we have to have a multitude of meters. So that's, that's the net metering side of it. Now with the property itself, what are you looking to lease the property that you put this on?
Yes. We would, we'd look to lease the, basically the footprint of each array. And then there would have to be some sort of easement for the, you know, power line interconnection and access road for maintenance. And we propose that the lease for the footprint of each one of these be thirty-eight hundred dollars a year, which, which is pretty reasonable. It's pretty much in the ballpark for, you know, what you pay for the footprint of a hundred and fifty KW array. And, but I do want to emphasize though that, just to go back to the meters thing for a second. If a meter is part of a net metering group, typically the, the, the bill associated with the meter can be fully, partially, or not even very much served by the net metering. And so when you were talking to me, it sounded to me like the, the, the only relatively low percentage of the bills associated with each one of those meters that go to the, or come from the hydro plant, only relatively small percentage of those bills is being offset by the net metered power. And that's something to watch. We typically try to allocate net metering credits that come up to about, or correspond to about ninety percent or eighty-five percent of the bill for that meter. But, you know, it could be a lot lower. And that's, that's a key parameter to, to pay attention to.
Would that be part of your proposal?
Yes, absolutely, sure. So, you know, it's possible to actually move meters out of one group into another group. That's all part of the administration that can go on with-
Well, I'm thinking this place here, you're putting one outside of this place, it uses a fair amount of electricity. And currently, the net meter agreement that we have only provides a small portion of the total bill.
Not bad.
If we could get into a net metering situation where we've got ninety percent of it, that makes a huge, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah. Let me ask you this. Well, you have a net metering agreement for this facility, for these meters here, with the owner and operator of the hydropower plant. So I don't know whether or not you could easily get out of that agreement. That's-
Oh, we have to provide other, other sites possibly, or equal usage, whatever.
Okay, yeah, you could swap other-
We have other pump stations that are serving-
We have a couple of large pump stations.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we could meet-
Or, or we could do vice versa. The ones we don't have, I have to add up to enough power usage, we have to figure that out. And we could say, okay, well, these are six, I'm just looking at the percentage differences. Because we're letting this process goes on too, this net metering. And you're talking about a hundred and fifty KW. Is that because of the size of the property or do you think you could put more than that?
It's for a couple of different reasons. On Maple Grove Road, there's no three-phase power. So, so a hundred and fifty KW is a ceiling that you hit up there for those arrays. Down here, there is three-phase, just coming right up for a long road. And so, at the same time, you know, it's interesting. We actually submitted a proposal to you back in two thousand fifteen, I think it was, or late two thousand fourteen, about this landfill outside here. And at the time, we thought that one fifty is all we could fit on top. And I still think that that's about right.
Do you go with the technology changes that are going out in that area?
Yeah, I don't think you can really pack in a whole lot more. I mean, the change is incremental. Like a panel that at that time was typically producing about two hundred and eighty-five or two hundred and ninety watts DC might be a three thirty-five or three forty watts DC now.
Not the whole, yeah.
So we would, we would do a full engineering analysis of how much we could fit up there. And if we could go past one fifty, we definitely would because we've got the three-phase right here. But I just can't answer you right now.
Yeah. But that's good to know that you would look and explore in that direction. Because that helps, you know, us also. And like I said, there are other, other facilities within the town that-
I have twenty-three pump stations and it's the plan, I think five of them are on it. So in a total of six of them are on the net meter. At the top of my head, I don't have-
I have two of them eight counts.
You have eight counts, okay.
And one being the panel, I'll just-
That's right. Those are the other two. So we have-
A couple of large pump stations.
So I have some big pump stations that we could renegotiate.
And each has its own meter?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah. Well, you know, we crunch all the numbers we could possibly crunch to find out, you know, how to make the most of it.
Worth looking into as far as I'm concerned. I think the mound is a perfect place. It's, what else are we going to use it for? We may also use it for something beneficial that can benefit the users and, you know, be a cost savings to them. That's my opinion.
Yeah, the, the reason-
I don't know further. These capped landfills and things like that. That's where a sewer should be, as I think it is.
Yeah.
You also have another one up on Dean Road. I don't know how much you could put up there.
That's five hundred.
That's the big one that's-
No, I'm not talking about a net match property.
Yeah, there's another.
There's a dump up there.
There is a dump there. Yep. I've seen that from the fence.
That's where the drainage goes.
I don't know how much that would facilitate, but all I'm saying is, you know, if you're, if they're, I don't know if that's a dump. I think it's as big as what you got here.
Who owns that, that property though?
That's the same person that you, there's, there's two different pieces. I'm not sure what stump you're talking about, Ron. There's a super fun site up there that's fenced in.
That's right.
The, the state takes and maintains.
Oh yeah, okay.
And takes care of. And that might be as big as this one out here.
That's the one I was thinking of. Was that, that is sludge from the, from the tannery dump, Sam, as well, they had it down here in this cap. That's what's in here.
Did I say that?
Yep. I was just curious about that. I'm very happy to hear you talk about these dumps and expired gravel beds or what have you. That's where these things should be. Because you had problems down in South Powell and the problems were that, you know, people, well, like, nobody knows all this stuff. I don't know all this stuff.
I think the location is appropriate. I think the run is trying to say-
They holler about, there's heavy metals and that stuff and everything. They didn't want that type of water source, which is fine. I don't know. I don't, I, you know, I didn't get into discussing with everybody. But I do think that your processes, I like your ideas as far as, and I think that we should get as much of the town stuff on net metering as we can. And if there's any way we can work that with, with you people, I think that's fine. I think everybody will agree to that.
I think you're looking at locations that are appropriate, beneficial for the town.
And up there, I mean, the only thing about up there in Palm Center, there isn't three-phase out there at that point in time.
Yep.
Which they may be. I mean, you're running three-phase all over the place. But there is three-phase down here. You know, well, actually, a lot of it was due to this, this sewer plant and stuff.
That's right.
Three-phase. You know, they upgraded this long before they did the other stuff.
I was, I was saying to Nelson earlier how wonderful it is that this was a stinky hole with icky smells and now, look at it now. So one more beneficial reuse of the area. I mean, I'm getting a little bit of support on that.
I'm not pro or a con. It's, so I don't know anything about it, I don't speak of it. But I think if it's something that, I've heard the other side of the coin, the heavy metals and all that stuff. And they say, well, they, one fellow said it's a capture of the glass. Well, nuclear was a great thing when it came out. But now you can't have a nuclear plant.
No, all of that-
So all I'm saying is, I do approve of it being on these waste, these are waste lots.
Nothing you can make there.
Nothing. You can't put any punctures in the ground. You've got to fasten it down some way without puncturing the ground.
Well, we use balance actually.
That's right.
Big heavy blocks.
Yeah. They do that on roofs down in Troy. It's nothing. I've seen it.
Right.
And the maintenance-
I don't know what they had in there. It looked like sandbags to me, but they had it all covered up and it was on frame. And it worked. I mean, that, that's why I'm perfectly happy listening to your proposal and anything you can do for us. I don't know about the rest of it, but I'm all for it.
I do want to ask a couple of questions.
Good.
One is that, what, one is that I know there's state requirements on different towns and it seems to be that Poundle's way ahead of the curve for renewables, for particularly, particularly, you know, solar.
To me, they're quoted, yeah.
To me, to me, whatever the quote is. In fact, I'm not even sure if we're not already there. So I think we'd need to find out from the state that if we were to proceed with this and we were to get these, that that would be the last of it. You know, we're way ahead. We don't need anymore. It's, it can't be here and our beautiful pastures. It's got to be here instead of our beautiful pastures. So that's one of them. And then earlier, you were talking about where the funding was coming, or where the investors were coming from for this. You said it was funded by, by, I'm sorry, private investors and businesses?
Yeah.
Isn't it also subsidized?
The subsidy, yeah, the subsidies come in a couple of different ways. There's a federal investment tax credit for renewable energy investment. There's a state net metering program that sets actual values for the net metering credits worth. And the utilities agree to pay that. So it's a kind of a subsidy because it's what the utilities will agree to pay for power that's more expensive than they would, if they were to buy it from like a, you know, hydro Quebec or something like that.
But it's not, it's not really on power agreeing to pay a certain amount, right? I mean, that's federally mandated.
Well, I guess it's state.
Or state mandated.
They agreed in the sense that they all duke it out with the Public Utility Commission and then the PUC decides what, how the rule will be tweaked each time they, they change it.
They've changed, they've changed it a couple of times.
Yes, that's right.
And, you know, it's one of the reasons why-
It's not a free market decision. It's a, it's a governmental decision that is duked out.
The rates are mandated.
Yeah.
Is there like any kind of utility rates? Yeah.
Yeah. Rates, most utility rates are mandated.
It's not like any, because with renewable, it gets special consideration. So it, I mean, it is the same in that it goes through the regulatory process. But the weighting is substantially different because it's, because it's considered renewable. That's the only, I want to make sure we understood that. I mean, it's, I mean, generally speaking, I'm a free market guy.
I have just one question that if we negotiate, it would be a negotiation process too with the contract. My only concern would be the long-term maintenance, to make sure that they were maintained properly and all that. I'm sure you've heard that a thousand times, but I thought I would just throw that out as a consideration. I think we don't want to end up with something that we can't recycle or, you know, move off-site.
And most agreements that we have gone through with these before, basically just, just, they're responsible for maintaining, they're responsible for turning earth back to one in this one that goes away.
Yeah. That's the other two. That would be-
We don't know what happens. Anyway, it was a, I was at a planning meeting last night. And it was very interesting, actually. They had all this, well, it looked like a, I don't know, when you put all different kinds of colors on board, what do you call it?
Like a map?
Yeah. No, and if they put, you have red zones, you're here you can put solar and here you can't.
You're up the VCRC?
Yeah. Well, no, this was Palm County Board last night. And it was interesting. And we realized, just like Bob just said, we are, we have, we're way ahead of the curve, this, this part of the state. We are, you know, but I don't mind signaling out places like you're talking about. That's fine. Because if we add any, that's where it should be. It shouldn't be out in somebody's field.
No, I'm, I'm with you.
People like working spaces and-
Feel to be a few.
They, they really like that, see? And where, if it's a place that you couldn't do anything with anyway, I think, I think it's great. And that's renewable energy thing. I mean, some of it, I'll never believe, you know, they claim that we're going to be using one-fourth of the order we're using now in twenty fifteen. But I think that's ridiculous. I know people be freezing with that on the street. But anyway.
That's why I heard you say-
That's just, you know, that's just my opinion, which is not, but what I'm saying is, they were talking about this stuff last night and, and, you know, hey, there was lawyers and doctors and Indian chiefs there. You know, they were all talking and they had a, you know, they had all these, these red circles and stuff on the map. And well, here's a good spot and here's a good spot. But you stood there and negotiated with these people. And a lot of people don't want that.
With the landowners, you mean?
With the landowners. Oh, that's right. And see, they don't, they don't really go for that because, you know, maybe they don't want to look at it. I don't know with the story.
I think that's why we live here, is what you're saying. We love our fields and we love our cows and we love living in the country. But if they're in the appropriate places-
If you've got places that have no other value, which you're not going to do anything out here on this slope over here. And even up there on Dean Road, if you put some, or even in Palm Center, that's a beautiful spot. I mean, there should be something there. I mean, rather than, that, that's the same thing as this. The same, same chemicals are in that up there as it are out here. And this happens here. And that's fine. The solar field in there would, would be fine as far as I'm concerned. If something did happen, if these things do turn out to be, oh my God, you know, the stuff is in, the ground's already poisoned. That's, that's the only statement I got on that. And I think, if we need, I mean, Bob was talking about, yeah, we got our, our quota, which we do. We do have, for the planning people. We got our quota for this section. But if we had to put more in, I would like the consideration to put it in in these places that they're, they're undeveloped. That's what these are. These are undeveloped places.
Yeah, I would, it's not whether we have to or not. It's whether or not we work out contractual agreement for the sites that we wish it to be on. And that the contract also gives a gain to the town to offset some costs. That to me then is a reasonable contract and reasonable to do. If all we're doing is putting something on a piece of property that gives us no gain, for some reason-
I agree.
I agree.
And that, that's where I'm at with this thing. But it sounds to me like what we need to do is to see your contracts that you're talking about, just to pre, pre-review these and come back with something. Because I think at that point, we should send them off to our attorney to have a look at these contracts. So we know what we're signing.
Did you change any of the proposals from the ones that we were given in December?
No. And let me just explain a couple of things. The, what I sent in December is a, is a two-page, well, three-page with a picture, lease option agreement. And it's basically, it just basically allows us to get our feet wet. It gives us enough confidence to be able to spend some money on getting a preliminary design done, getting out with an environmental scientist who we work with and starting the process. If everything pencils out, you know, and we would look at each project separately. But if, if, if a project looks feasible, then we would propose an actual lease, which is, you know, the comprehensive agreement. And so, let me just finish. We propose a lease because there are a number of things, sort of in the next phase, that cost a lot more money.
Yes.
Doing a site survey, doing the interconnection application, getting a civil engineering firm that we work with that specializes in landfills out to do a geotech analysis and so forth. So that's sort of what the process looks like. And, but I'd be happy to send you a lease at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, what I'd like to see at this point is, if there's a document that basically says for us to allow you to do those first steps to come out and look, in it somewhere that's going to have a clause that basically locks us in with you, I assume, for a period of time.
For a period of time, yeah.
And I don't know what that, I haven't looked at the legal documents, so I don't know just how those words are. But I want to make sure that they protect the town as well as you. And that's usually where the lawyers come in because we know we're not lawyers. And basically, we want to make sure you're protected so you can go do that preview and come back and make a lease agreement and a proposal of how you're going to put what on there. And then that's a different preview that we'll look through and-
Right.
And make a decision.
Yeah.
But this first one sounds like it's a very simple-
It is.
-document which shouldn't cost as much of our, because all I would ask lawyers is, is there anything here that would harm the town?
Well, we'd also pay, I think I proposed a thousand dollars for each one as an option payment. And it's, and I think the term is a year that I proposed. But, but all it does is it, it says that, you know, you're not going to sell the land, you're not going to lease it to somebody else. Things are going to be just kind of stable to complete the-
I'm not saying there's, there's anything wrong with it. I'm just saying I'd like to have a stamp. I don't, the rest of them say they'll do it theirself. You know, if I get outvoted, I'll get outvoted. But, but what I would like to do is to make sure that we, we're legally obligated to let you do that. Because we're, certainly if we're taking money, want to make sure that we're not liable in any way for anything.
Okay. Well, see what you think because the language hasn't changed at all. Okay, well, see what you think because the language hasn't changed at all.
So you still have that? You have it.
Yeah.
And I think I'm seeing it for the first time, so I might have more questions. Sorry.
Sure.
Keep going.
Don't hesitate.
So, well, first of all, what is the end of life on these things? And what happens, what happens at end of life?
Well, two things. The lifetime can be anywhere up beyond twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years. The panels themselves are...
Well, you said can be, but...
Well, the panels are warranty for twenty-five years. And we think, we think that after twenty-five to thirty years, the array is still going to be operating at close to eighty percent of its original output. There are not a lot of moving parts. It's a pretty simple technology.
Okay, but then if it had to be removed for whatever reason, it did at end of life? Or something fell out of the sky and broke them all or whatever?
Oh, yeah. So the permit and the lease both obligate the system owner to decommission the whole thing, pull it out, take it away, and restore the site to its original condition. So we have a contractual obligation to do that.
Is that, then, if it's a bankruptcy or something along those lines, then is that covered by insurance?
Well, you have a, what's the terminology I'm looking for? There's a, I had it, now I lost it. But it's to do with...
Decommissioning.
Yeah, there's usually, well, there's a decommissioning, but there's a, what we make you take out of insurance that basically that policy is then carried through to cover the occasional makeover.
Well, we have very comprehensive insurance. And a lot of times, the landlord wants to see that actually specked out in our leases.
That's true.
You know, different categories of insurance and what it all totals up to. So we have, you know, ample insurance for this type of thing.
And I know that's the kind of thing that the lawyer was going to...
What I was looking for is, and we use it a lot, is impact fee. Is basically, there's a fee, which is usually insurance, that says if you go bankrupt or anything to this nature, we have impact fee. So you have the cover, a certain coverage that says if this occurs, then that fee comes to the town so you can take care of it.
Now, if we went bankrupt, if Green Lantern went bankrupt, it would not have much effect on the projects. Because first of all, each array that we build has got its own LLC, it's its own special purpose entity. And there's a bank in the background that wants to get all of its money back. And the thing is, the array will just keep on operating. And the value of the net metering credits that it generates have a value that's mandated by state legislation. So it's almost impossible for the array itself to go bankrupt. And it would simply be moved, like if we went bankrupt as a firm, it would simply be moved to a different owner and just keep on plugging away. And the only thing is that, you know, you as the landlord would continue to get your lease because they need to keep it operating and...
In the contract, it would move to the new owner?
Yes, it would be assigned to the new owner. It's all in the lease. And the offtakers, the worst thing that could possibly happen to them is that their electric bill would just go back to what it would ordinarily be. But the likelihood of that happening is very, very, very small. Because it's in the interest of everybody to keep the array just operating on a routine basis.
Well, they're going to make money if they want to keep it running.
Yeah, it's a resource.
Yeah, but again, we're talking about two separate types of legal documents here.
Yes.
One is the preliminary document that only lets you get on, do your thing. Then you're going to come with a proposal to us. And in that proposal, we will see all these things that were voiced in concerns about coming up. And now it's the second, we have to approve that before that could move forward.
Definitely.
So basically, what we're doing now is just seeing if the sites won't even...
But there are good big terms in the original document that could be used to negotiate the final document.
Yes.
Things like...
It's got it right there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a twenty-year lock-in at the lease rate and it's only tiered after ten years. So it's one rated ten years and then another rate for the next. And when all this business and industry comes to the panel and our rates skyrocket or our property values go way up, we all hope that happens. But I mean, this, so because we're entering into this in good faith, this becomes something that's almost certainly going to be in the final, in the final contract. And it's going to be thirty-eight hundred dollars a year for ten years and then an increase to forty-two hundred for the next ten years. So you're pretty much locking in the lease rate for twenty years. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have legal...
And what we usually do is we have three, five-year option extensions or extension options at additional rates that are specified in the lease to take it out to thirty-five years.
That's why Nelson wants to send it to a attorney, right?
Who is your town attorney?
Bob Fisher.
Oh, Bob Fisher. Well, he knows this well, then. Yeah, that's good.
The only problem with it is there is, there is lethal weight to a good faith, a good faith even when it gets to the final contract.
You are right.
So that might be something to look at.
We just signed today...
We want as much money out of you as possible.
Oh, sure, I mean, that's...
Sorry.
Be direct. We're going to tell you.
But we just, we just actually executed this precise document today with the town of Wyndham. They have a piece of property behind the town office. And their attorney is also Bob Fisher.
I could say Bob Fisher.
So he's very up to date on this particular document.
Okay, good. I think so, you know, I lost...
Yeah, I kind of figured that out when we were, when I was looking around for one.
It's good to know Wyndham's offering some of our costs if we negotiate a better deal.
That's right.
Think we should.
Okay, any, anything else?
I think it's getting dark in here. We're almost going to ask the attorney on the lights, but...
We don't have any solar here.
We can't afford the electric though right now.
Got to get it on that solar.
Yeah, this one.
But is there any other questions you want to ask, if you please do? Well, I want to thank you very much for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
If the board's in approval, we'll have our lawyer look over this initial agreement. And we'll get back to you.
Great, thanks. If anybody would like either my card or one of these flyers about us, feel free to take one, yeah.
I'm sure you all would too, right? Or do you already have all those?
I'll just take a card.
Yeah, just in case you'd like some.
There you go, hasn't known.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry, apologies again for last time.
Hey, we can't, we can't control the weather even though some people have accused us of doing that at times.
Thanks. All right, well, thanks a lot. And I'll just wait to hear from Linda.
Okay, that's good. Now Linda's going to be unavailable to do some things for a little while, but...
Only for people first, just to...
Well, I'll just sit tight and wait to hear from...
Okay, thanks.
I don't know how fast Bob's going to get right on it too.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, yeah.
Okay, anything else before us, guys? You put the darkness...
I'm looking through a jury.
I got a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, sorry.
Any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out of here, folks.
Great.